Our new security manager, Abby Baumgart.
Welcome to the EVPL. We're glad to have you. Okay, visitors, I have a list of two, three, four, five, six. So generally, we usually allocate a couple of minutes so everybody could limit their comments to two minutes or under. And so we can get down with our agenda this evening. I just shuffled them up, so they're in no particular order. So first up is Pete. Or Pete, is that you? Okay, I can't really, Mike. If you, when you get to Mike, if you would, if you would get to Mike, if you would introduce yourself and for the record, just where you're from.
All right. My name is Barton Heath. I'm from Newburgh. And first off, I wanted to thank you all for having to sit in the difficult situation of having people try and tell you which way you should go, which way you shouldn't. I appreciate it. I was given the keys to the kingdom of library when I was in fourth grade. And it was one of the most memorable moments of my life. But I think that seems like there's a lot of contested ideas about what should be presented here. And I think that your parents raise you in the way that they would like you to be in their image. But sooner or later, that has to go. The Jewish faith, they have a bar mitzvah and vass mitzvah. So that's thirteen years old. You're more or less considered an adult. And in my case, I finally reached my grandmother's book on the top shelf at fourteen. Pulled it down. It was a gilded book. I'd longed to read it for a long time. When I pulled it down, it said Mein Kampf. And I asked her if I could read that. And she put me off to my dad and said, ask your dad. And to my surprise, my dad responded, you can read anything that you want to read, and I'll trust God, and I'll trust you to know the difference between what's wrong and what's right. Because he had felt, I'm sure that they had done well by me. So I think you have to take some time and think that you can't control everything that your children are going to do every day of their lives. They're, they're going to head their own direction sooner or later. You've got to release control and regardless of whether you like what they're doing or not. And that's the way we pass that same ideal on to our own children. So I really just want to thank you for putting up with all that you've had to endure. Appreciate the library and your, your intelligence and direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Morehead. There you are first.
I'm Jennifer Morehead. I'm from Evansville. And I'm here today because I've heard that there was talks of removing LGBTQ plus books and displays from the library. And I'm very, 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 very much against that. I think that having those things in the library is suicide prevention. There are so many kids that feel unseen, especially in this community. And they can come to the library and maybe see those books and feel seen when they're scared at home because mom and dad don't agree with who they are as a person. The library is supposed to be a safe place, and it should be a safe place for everyone. So I just wanted to say, like, please keep that section. Please keep those displays. It could literally save lives.
Susan.
I'm Susan Blankenship. I'm from Evansville, Indiana. I just noticed on the outside of this boardroom, the quotation from Franklin Roosevelt, "We have learned to be citizens of the world, members of the human community." And as such, I feel like the library should represent the human community, and the human community involves a lot, a lot, a lot of variation. And that includes the LGBTQ plus community, that includes the African American community, that includes the immigrant communities, that includes so many communities. And I really appreciate it that the library is representative of those communities. And I would echo what was just said by Jennifer about this being a safe space for learning. And I appreciate that the library is that place. Thank you.
Thank you. Eager.
Hello, I'm Eager Lawson. I live here in Evansville. And I'm here to ask the library board to please continue to support programming for LGBT people, especially LGBT youth. One in three kids currently experiencing homelessness in this country are queer or trans. And the majority of these kids have been kicked out by unsupportive families. The library is often the first and the last refuge for this vulnerable population. I know this well as a former homeless queer youth myself, and as a current service provider who's worked for over a decade doing homeless outreach with United Caring Shelter and Food Not Jails here in our community. The library saved my life at my most vulnerable point, and I've seen it serve that role for others. Eliminating this programming does nothing to protect children and does everything to shame, exclude, and alienate the most vulnerable children in our community, all while keeping their peers ignorant and perpetuating a cycle of discrimination. I would ask those of you tasked with running our local library system to keep this space public and accommodating to all, and especially those who find themselves bullies and bullied and demonized elsewhere. I would also ask you not to give into pressure from some who are pushing an agenda of exclusion and to be the bulwark of protecting the library against such actions. Libraries remain one of the few free places in a world where nothing is free. They remain one of the few public spaces in a world where everything is enclosed and privatized. They remain a beacon of critical thinking in a world full of censorship. They're a place where people of all walks of life come together and cooperate in a world where we are incredibly increasingly driven apart and taught to hate one another and to compete with one another. There was a time when EVPL was much different than the inclusive place it is today. Once upon a time, many people in Evansville were excluded from EVPL. They were relegated to only being able to check out books from a racially integrated Willard Library because EVPL at that time pursued a policy of racial exclusion and segregation. One that was largely justified to appease the irrational bigotry of a white majority. It took years of needless suffering of community members for EVPL to come around and agree that marginalized and minority groups deserve public accommodation and deserve to feel accounted for in our own community. I'm asking EVPL to keep stepping forward and keep upholding the egalitarian principle that makes libraries unique and effective in our community.
Taylor.
I'm Taylor Starks. I live here in Evansville. I'm mostly here to request something along the similar line as everyone else who's spoken so far. I believe it's integral, it's vastly important to keep these displays and these kinds of books in our library. My husband is a transgender man, and we're currently expecting a child this January, and she deserves as much as any other kid to see her family represented in the books that she reads and that are read to her. And who's to say that I can't raise her that way? If it's someone else's right to decide what their child reads, I should be able to decide what my child reads. And I just kind of want you to think about that. The, it's not all a broad concept. It's granular. Families need these resources. And thank you for your time.
I believe that's everybody that signed up. Is that correct? Thank you for speaking before the EVPL. We appreciate comments from the community on all the issues. So, thank you. Next correspondence, that folder is going around. Next thing is I need to appoint a secretary pro temp. Do I have any volunteers from the board?
I'll be happy to volunteer.
Well, thank you. Not that I was staring at you. So Belinda will serve as our secretary pro temp for this meeting. Thank you. Consent agenda. Does everybody had a chance to review that? Can I hear a motion for approval? Here's a motion. Second. A second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. Governance. First item, the Consortium for E-Rate Internet Access.
Hi, get up closer here. Hi, I'm Brett Shellhorn, IT manager of the library system. Each year I have to ask this, so I'm sorry for those who get to hear this each year or me repeat myself. As part of belonging to E-Rate, we have to join the Indiana State Library Consortium to get E-Rate funding, which provides us a discount for our internet connection that we pay each month. That discount through E-Rate we get is approximately seventy-three thousand dollars a year, and we get a monthly discount. This document, I am asking the board to review the document and agree to join the Indiana State Library Consortium, which allow us to continue to receive that E-Rate discount.
Can I hear a motion for approval? Second, motion, second, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Joe, is there any downside to this, or is it just all looks positive?
There is no downside. The requirements are listed one through four, and I can read them off real quick. Number one is filtering. We agree to filter. As I mentioned, every year we can't allow porn in areas viewable on computers where children are present. We have to ensure that we budgeted the money for this, for the non-E-Rate funded portion. We agree that we assume financial responsibility for the non-E-Rate portion. And we also agree, we work with Adtech, with, is a company that works with libraries in Indiana to file the E-Rate paperwork. There's no downside to this. From my point of view, it's a great savings to taxpayers, and we still provide a great service to the community.
Is there a cost?
Sounds good.
I couldn't hear him.
Cost or dues associated with it?
No, there's not any extra cost or dues that we're paying. And we do have to go through Adtech, which most libraries in the state do for their E-Rate paperwork.
So it costs us nothing and saves us money?
Yes, yes.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Please, please sign on the form on the a side.
Thank you.
And Valinda twice. Thank you.
All right, finance report. Lori.
First on the finance report, this month is the first reading of our 2024 proposed budgets. And as you saw in your packet and what I sent out last week, first provide you an update of our budget. We did meet the finance committee on July the twenty-sixth and reviewed the proposed budget and took into consideration and made a slight revision to our library operating fund as recommended. And then we sent the proposed budgets out to all board members. And then, of course, today is our first reading, and you can see our budget workshop with the DLGF is on August twenty-second. And from there, we just follow the state director of Indiana Budget Division deadlines that are provided for us. Before I get too far into the budget, I would like to welcome the business manager of Willard, who's joined us today, Kim Higgins. And so, welcome, Kim. And she does provide part of this, she and the Willard Board provides part of this budget. So I do like to recognize that they've, they've put some effort into this as well, in their portion of it. The first major page of your packet will show you the comparison of our approved or certified budget of twenty-twenty-three to our proposed budget of twenty-twenty-four. This is for all five funds, and all five of those funds, whether they're individually at growth or decline of appropriations for twenty-twenty-four, the five total must be under the maximum growth levy quotient or maximum levy growth quotient. It's an acronym I would get transpired there. We do have to stay under four percent, which is what the state set for this year. And that came late in the spring, early summer with new legislation that passed that they maxed that out at four percent. So it is down from five percent of twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four. The breakdown follows, and I'm not going to go into great detail, but if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. The next set of pages are the library operating fund, which is a detailed line items within the budget of the operating fund. You see overall, the percentage of increase for that was ten point seven percent. That includes the increase of the salaries that were passed in the May meeting here in this board meeting. And then that is based on the January first, twenty-twenty-three to the January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four increase. You recall, we did already increase them for the second half of the year with the first payroll in July. So that is not representative of what we are currently paying and what we were paying twenty-twenty-four, but the representation is of January first of twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four. And that includes no additional increases than what we've already implemented. The next set of packets is just a summary of those line item details for our library operating funds. You'll see in your packet a debt worksheet, and that I'll just explain quickly is a DLGF form, and this is for our bond interest and redemption bond or what we repay on our loans, lease loan, lease bonds or our general obligation bonds. And under column that's listed, line five, those are the amounts that we'll pay yet this year, and that will pay off our leasing corporation twenty-eleven and twenty-thirteen bonds. And then line fifteen column shows what we have estimated with the anticipated debt service repayment schedule of twenty-twenty-three bonds that are to be sold next month. And that will be for next year. That correlates with the side-by-side comparison, and that's why there's a decrease because we are paying off those leasing corporation bonds at the end of this year. And then further out is for the twenty-twenty-five repayment schedules. And again, these are estimates based on what we currently knew at the time for our repayment of the twenty-twenty-three bond that's going to be issued or sold next month. The next two pages are our library improvement reserve fund and our rainy day fund, and that's just twenty-twenty-three miscellaneous information that shows demonstrates what our cash balance will be at the end of twenty-twenty-three. Both of these funds are non-tax levy funds, so any funds that go into them and increase our cash line is a transfer from our library operating fund. Twenty-twenty-three, you'll notice on, we call it LUR for the library improvement reserve fund, shows zero transfer because we are utilizing the budget amount out of the operating fund to help offset the increase in our salaries for the second half of twenty-twenty-three. And then the rainy day fund is based on a transfer that comes after the end of the year, if we have any cash left after our, our expenses have been paid and our encumbrances have been set up for, for the next year. So you can see there, we have plenty of cash on hand at the end of the year to cover the proposed twenty-twenty-four budgets.
Lori, I did have a question, and I think it's just on that rainy day fund proposed. Might just be mine, but it says proposed for twenty-twenty-three at the bottom.
You weren't supposed to catch that. I just didn't. Yes, that is. So on the bottom of the, where it says proposed, that is twenty-twenty-four.
So I get extra points?
Sure.
Thank you.
And then the last page in the packet for the first reading is the proposed twenty-twenty-four budget for what we call the special library district or Willard Library. And their board has reviewed this and approved this at their last meeting. And so they have proposed a three point four, three percent increase. And again, that's factored into when we put all five funds together. Any questions?
Yeah. Thank you. Just look into the detailed part of the library operating budgets. So health insurance just, is just part and parcel, you know, every year it goes up and, you know, is that what that is or?
No. Um, I tried to in the summary packet list what that increase was for. So as we have increased staff, we now are at a point where most, all of our vacancies are filled. And each time you fill a vacancy, you may fill that vacancy with somebody who vacated it and only had a single plan, and they come in and need the family plan. And so there's some adjustments made as we hire, and then with what vacant positions we still have, we try to put them in the middle tier, which is halfway between a single and a family plan. And so we have enough money budgeted to cover the expenses for that.
Okay. Down on the under I think audiobooks and electric library materials up maybe eighty-five thousand. Is that because items have gotten more expensive inflation on products or just more product?
Both.
Okay.
So e-audiobooks have gone up in expense. We have two types of e-audiobooks. One, we get through Overdrive and Libby, and we pay for the actual title when we purchase it. And they are quite expensive. They're more expensive than the ebooks. And then the other type is through the Hoopla checkouts, and we get charged for each time someone checks out an e-audiobook, an ebook, or other resources through Hoopla services. And those are based on the fact that you don't have to set on a holding list. They have a lot of the same titles, but not always. Sometimes they have them on Hoopla, but not on Libby and vice versa.
Okay. Then on pest control, is that just? I mean.
So the increase in pest control was based on the fact that our pest, our previous pest control sold out to another company. That company came in and started working from the contracts we had. We signed new contracts. But in that process, we realized that the termites warranty, the treatment and warranties that we had were no longer in effect from the previous company. And so this is to budget for our three neighborhoods, east, west, and string town, where we see the majority of that, those problems, so that we can retreat them and get them then on a warranty schedule, on an annual schedule for inspections. And it also be adding our annex over across the street as an older building.
Okay. Next question's on staff development and training. That increase, is that due to the new employees and the turnover employees?
So under that particular category, we have always taken out the staff institute or staff training days. And because we've increased that to two days, that includes additional expenses. And it also allows for us to bring in external outside speakers and trainers. And then the other thing that was added to that is actually just moved. It was transferred from our marketing department to this particular line item because it is for the we have an annual holiday breakfast, and at that, we give a staff appreciation gift.
Okay. And then, you know, I see you got a big cut in fifty thousand dollars in furniture from the previous year. Is that just because you're caught up now? You don't need to buy as much?
And we have the opportunity with the bonds that we're issuing when we do renovations, that includes some furniture and equipment.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Other questions?
Just a comment. Lori, I really appreciate the time and effort on this summary document. And I was on the finance committee with Eric and Bob, and we had the opportunity to go through the details. But I really appreciate the summary document. That's really helpful. Thank you.
I really like that plus minus column. That's good.
For the second reading, could we have all of these but on bigger papers or even numbers such?
Well, second reading, I won't give you all these papers, but we'll have some additional. So yeah, I'll try, try to make a little larger print for you.
Thank you. Now, the only question I had, so at the very beginning of your presentation, you were discussing the state's cap. Was it say five?
Four percent.
And so it might have assumed that that three point five seven is where we landed under the four percent.
Yes, correct. And we try not to max out at the four percent because that gives us flexibility. In case we have something come along, we have to do an additional appropriation on top of what we've already budgeted and without going over that maximum. Because once we go over the maximum, we have to go through the city council. And they then have the ability to do a binding review of the library's budgets. Just one other quick note, I, when I came back today from leave, received a notice from Baker Tilly that the DLGF was their net assessed values for Vanderbilt County. And the increase was three point eight five percent. We were originally estimating ten percent. So the repayment of the twenty-twenty-three bond that we're getting ready to sell may be adjusted a little bit, and that will adjust our schedule for the debt worksheet that you saw today. The other fund that that may increase or affect would be our Willard Special Fund because by state law, we're only allowed to levy point oh one six seven cents on every hundred dollars. And that will then be again affected a little bit because it's not a full four percent. But they, they budgeted very wisely this year, so they should be in good shape. They'll still get an increase because assessed value is going up, but maybe not as much as we anticipated.
How will affect the bonds?
I'm sorry.
How will affect the twenty-twenty-three bond?
So with the bond repayment schedule, we've always had, it's structured so that we never increased the point oh three six one cents that we'd have a tax levy rate of. And if you went by the current payment structure, it was estimating it based on a ten percent increase of assessed values. So they will just go back and adjust it within that six years, but maybe a little less the first year that lumped some amount. But then, then suing five years after that will increase a little bit. It'll still always stay within the same tax levying rate though. So it's the repayment amount that may be changed. It'll still be six million dollars.
Less interest.
Plus interest.
Any additional question? Do we need to approve first reading?
Nope.
Report of appropriations?
So for the month end of July, we have a library operating bond balance of seven million, seven hundred eighty-one thousand, two hundred forty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents, or the equivalent of fifty-one percent of the original certified budget plus encumbrances. We're very much on target for the year, even though that would appear that we are nine percent over. If you were doing it in one twelfth increments, because we have some encumbrances that have not been fulfilled, or they came in at a lower cost, so we'll have to reduce the encumbrance amount, which reduces the budget by those totals.
There, Lori, the hundred and fifty thousand that's still in there for transfer to learn, probably not going to happen.
It's not, because we are going to reallocate that. And I know I said last month that I bring those transfers, but I didn't get to that this month for some other reasons. But I will get that by the beginning of the fourth quarter, so that you can see where the funds are coming to offset the salary increases and where we took, what lines we took them from.
Okay. Thanks. Investments?
For the investments of our four funds in our state investment pool trust Indiana, we have a balance of sixteen million, forty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars. And you can see the withdrawals that were made for the month of July. And our average daily yield for July was five point one four zero nine percent, or up three and a quarter percent since June. And then the average daily yield year to date was four point seven nine nine six, or up almost six tenths percent since June.
Problems. Problem bills. I would like to move that the board approves the following expenditures for the period of roughly middle of July.
For the period of roughly middle of July through middle of August. Uh, general invoices, four hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and one three cents. And for payroll, the first payroll, three hundred and thirty-four, two seventy-four, thirty-eight. And the second payroll on slide twenty-eight, four hundred and eighty-five, four sixteen, forty-three.
Second? Motion is second, any discussion? Harry None, all those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same time? Harry None, move carries. Other business? Twenty twenty-four eclipse.
And we have Katie, Ronnie Keith. Um, presenting this for us on behalf of the task force that was studying this for EVPLs.
So really the only difference, um, there were just a few updates from last uh, month's report, this is the same report. But we added a couple of new information that we discovered um, between now and, or between the previous. Board meeting and now it was just uh, several closer closures were announced. Um, some local schools, Henderson County, Carmel Clay, MSD of Mount Vernon School, South Gibson, those will all be closed. On April eighth, uh, additionally, North Posey uh, will have an e-learning day that day. Warwick County, Westside Catholic Schools will have virtual learning days. And USI is hosting a special event that day, so they will not be having classes or offices, but they are um, they're basically. Promoting themselves as the big event that day, it will be uh, the eclipse. Um, trying to think of the, the Solar Palooza, I think is the name of it, but. The whole campus will be open to the public and they're uh, bringing in special speakers, entertainment, food, things like that. Um, so in light of that, um, additional information and at the request of the board. The administration and administrative staff got together, looked at the pros and cons, which are also in the report and made the decision that. Um, our recommendation is that we close all locations the day of due to. The large influx of people coming into the county, issues with the um, impossible traffic congestion and things like that. Um, at the last uh, twenty, let's see, at the last regional um, subcommittee meeting. Uh, the safety subcommittee did get to get, uh, did come up and give us a report basically saying that anyone who. Does plan on um, making any changes to their schedules, special events, closures, things like that. Make that decision as soon as possible because that way they can get that information out as soon as possible. Um, they also are going to be planning a special communications out to the public saying. On the day of, please, if you uh, are planning on traveling that day. To have extra food, extra water and extra gas in your vehicles because they anticipate that there will be a lot of congestion that day. Especially in um, smaller locations like downtown where it can, you know, you can see a lot of gridlocks and things like that. So it was recommended by them that we, we make a decision sooner rather than later.
And as Katie was attending these committee meetings on our behalf, um, local law enforcement was recommending that. Uh, if we can be off the roads, we'd be off the roads, I compare this to when I was down in Mobile. And when we would close the library system for Mardi Gras and Lunde Gras. Um, on normal parade days throughout the month, we would just close our one downtown library, um, an hour before um. Mardi Gras parade and sometimes it would start shutting downtown early and we would have to get the staff out very quickly, so. It's one of those just because of the amount of people that's expected. Um, it's the safest thing that we can do from um, a public service standpoint of making sure. Um, we're not congesting the roads, having people travel to our libraries or that our staff is not caught on congested roads as well. We would hate for someone to try and bring their kids to the library if we're open and get caught in traffic and all of those types of things.
I will say that in addition um, to this, we aren't doing nothing if we do close down, we already have a um. Planning committee who is getting together, I think we have about nine people signed up to plan several events. In advance of to in encourage knowledge and uh, safety practices. Our foundation board approved the purchase of an additional twenty thousand eclipse glasses to hand out. Both at those programs and at our um, checkout desks. So as of now, we anticipate having at least twenty-four thousand glasses to hand out.
That's awesome.
So this comes to the board in the form of a recommendation from the task force internally. Um, before we have a, an discussion, we need a motion to. Prove or some other motion?
I may, or do we have a motion, sorry? I second.
So there's a motion and a second, now discussion.
Yeah, I got a question and maybe I missed this, I apologize. Is there any revenue opportunity as far as uh, us rent, you know, like parking and stuff? For all of our different buildings and structures that maybe people could pay for parking? To earn some uh, revenues?
Can we charge for parking on public property?
Pardon?
I, I was asking Steve if we could charge for parking on public property.
I don't public property.
I've seen other communities, like when I go to uh, Nashville, um, Indiana. If you go there on a Saturday, their public library charges you to park, because you know. If you're there on the day they're not open and people would like to go shop and walk and do stuff. You know, they, they gotta, it's not a big fee, but they have a parking fee, but that doesn't mean. We have to, I'm just saying, is there an opportunity to make some money?
To your question, Joe, I would say yes, we can charge because we used to have pay tolls on our parking garage when it first opened. So I would say that is a possibility, now we would have to man staff that I can tell you what I did in Mobile. We offered up our lots as command centers for law enforcement and fire for emergency um. Um, workers essentially is what we did because we were centrally located, we had a nice lot. And um, they were able to um, be there and man that and sometimes because it's Mardi Gras and it was a parade, they also brought their families down and did that, but they were the command center for um.
Yeah, I mean, that's a great idea too. And, and one other thought is, I know like at the uh, Westside Fall Festival, you know, at the Westside Net Club Fall Festival. They allow uh, uh charitable organizations. To say, hey, you, you can use our parking lot, have somebody there, work it, collect whatever you collect, you know, maybe you could do a share like, hey, you can keep. Seventy-five percent of it, give twenty-five percent back to the library or fifty fifty, whatever it might be, but. I'm just saying, we got an asset, it could be that we could have a potential to either help a charitable organization make money. You know, by working it and that way you wouldn't have to use staff or, or uh. You know, I'm just thinking out loud saying it could be an opportunity.
Just that, that's a little bit off topic with the present motion, but we have Katie go back and come back to us next month. With su- suggestions about how we can use the facility we have, even if they aren't open on April eighth.
I can certainly do that, would that be um? So are you uh, are you suggesting we postpone the decision of what we will do with our locations that day or um?
I think that would be in the form of a motion, wouldn't it?
We have a motion now to close them.
Yeah, so the, the motion on the floor right now is to close, to take option one is suggested by the, the team that was put together. To close all EVPL locations on the day of the eclipse.
Okay.
And I think, and I think, and I think the, the prudent thing to do is if that gets approved. And we decide we're gonna do that, then we could explore other opportunities.
Certainly.
We have six months left, right?
So, so while we're in discussion, I'll, I'll discuss myself. Um, you know, the only piece of information that I, I, I would have liked to have seen and you can't provide it if it doesn't exist yet now is the EVP or the EBSC's. Guidance and what they're gonna do that day, because that's an awful lot of. People, kids, if they choose to close or go to a virtual day or whatever they may or may not do, you know, I. This is a location that a lot of those folks might end up.
Correct.
Doesn't mean that that's necessarily our position that we have to stay open if they close, but I think it would be factored into our decision making.
I think generally when EBSC closes, we follow suit, uh, we usually close if they are, but um. I don't believe they've made a decision as of now as to what they will be doing.
No action this month.
So we don't have that bit of information, um, there is a motion on the floor, so I'll ask if there's any additional discussion.
I understand why we want to close downtown and perhaps some of the others, but for instance, why would Red Bank have to close? Otherwise, it'll be out there on Red Bank Road doing anything, uh, no, it's gonna be at the one on up near um, Morgan Avenue, pre-Morgan.
Um, Oak, Oakland?
Yeah, yeah, it's a residential area.
I think um, I was, it was, it's generally our um, I don't know if it's policy, but it's. Our rule that if we are to close one.
We're closing for some staff, it's very equitable to close for all staff if we're closing some locations, because some people would get the day off and some people would have to work.
Don't pay them, pay them, that's fine.
Well, and if, if they are expecting the crowds that they are.
And traffic on the Lloyd as well.
All over. Bottleneck all over the city, so if one is going to close.
Correct, if USI is anticipating, yeah.
And I really wrestled with this decision, really trying to be fair and equitable and what's safe. And I really considered because being an educator, I thought about students, if, if the schools do close, we don't know yet. But then it occurred to me, this is really an act of God or an act of nature, um, whichever way you believe and um. It's similar to me to an inclement weather day, a snow day or an ice day, we just know about it so far in advance. And so that actually, that rationale really settled with me as far as how we handle those situations. It's just this, we have so much advance notice about.
Katie, to that point, were there discussions with the, the overall city county teams and like local law enforcement about? Uh, you know, what Bob's asking here, you know, Oakland Branch, North Park Branch, do they anticipate traffic problems there or are they just? With the major thoroughfare?
They anticipate the major thoroughfares and the smaller, smaller thoroughfare, so you're looking at. Um, you're looking at the Lloyd, you're looking at uh, Diamond, you're looking at forty-one. But then the main offshoots from those larger roads as well will be clogged because you will have a lot of people. Looking to avoid the major roadways and resorting to those smaller roads as well. Um. As Melinda said, all of it is conjecture at this point, we can only go based off of what we know. And we did do a lot of reaching out to other public libraries that were in the path of totality in the twenty seventeen. Um, they had a lot of useful knowledge, uh, most of them did stay open, they had mixed reviews as to whether that was a positive experience or not. Most of them said it was, um, they actually saw less attendance. Inside the physical buildings, they had much lower attendance, even when they planned special events for viewing. People just didn't go to the public library for that, so you could, that could be an argument towards or for closing. It, is there an advantage to our buildings being open at, on that day? Um, but as, you know, as the administrative staff looked at, the positives don't seem to outweigh the negatives due to the safety. The very, very good possibility that staff will be late getting to their locations if they're working. The evening shifts, they're gonna be having a hard time because they're dealing with the influx or the outflux of um. Of people in the, in the areas because that's when people will be leaving. The area and then same issue with the morning staff.
And with the way uh, we have staff, does anyone know roughly what this costs the library?
To close?
Adding a holiday for employees, I mean, most employees would be in a paid status. Uh, it'd only be a few.
I honestly don't know, I've never figured it, I've never totaled it up, but we did.
Yeah, and we don't have any floating holidays, uh, some EBSC have floating holidays where you would name this day and place it that day.
She's gonna look at a bi-weekly payroll and divide it, I think so.
Oh.
Cause it's on her sheet.
Oh, Lori's gonna do, I thought Lori could do those kinda figures in her head.
So, but the problem with using the number we have available right now, it includes um.
Unfilled positions budgeted?
No, it includes um, deductions for. Healthcare for.
What are we talking?
It's a rough estimate, yeah.
Yeah, about twenty-four thousand, twenty-three, eight seventy-six-ish.
The easy way around that is simply, and I don't listen. We simply will open up on a day we'll be closed next year, otherwise be open on Veterans Day or be open on Labor's Day or something. And just offset that way. Is that a consideration?
I defer to my, my higher ups on that one.
Do we wanna consider that and come back next month with the possibility?
I would also just say that technically, we haven't decided how that would, so lots of part-time staff, they would not be paid on that day and they would still adjust their schedules. So they would still be working their twenty hours per week.
Still be able to get there.
Correct, and so. In that respect, especially when it comes to our part-time staff. Not saving or losing any money, it's going, that they will adjust their schedules to work still twenty hours that week, they just wouldn't work on a Monday.
Yeah, we have minimal part-time, don't we?
I don't know what they are right now, I don't know what the full-time FTE is currently versus part-time.
Thought it was, it's less than twenty percent, I know that.
Well, I, I'm just gonna speak of, I, I don't think that we are, while we would wanna make a decision as quickly as we could, so we can let everybody know. I still think there are some pieces of information that we would all like to have and to think about and contemplate. Um, there is a motion on the floor, so we, that could either be removed or we can vote on it. If it passes, it passes, if it fails, then we can reconsider it another day.
I would like to have a move to table it, to be voted on next time.
That's option two. And so there's a motion to table the current motion.
I, I have a, under the comment or discussion uh, part of this. Just to add to this, I do know that the convention bureau has budgeted a lot of money, I mean, I think it's a couple hundred thousand dollars. Promoting the area, bringing people in and most hotels are booking uh, minimum, I think it's a minimum three nights stay. So this is not just gonna be a one-day event, this actually could be a multiple-day event because. You know, people coming into Evansville, then maybe they might only come for the one day, but they're gonna be paying for multiple days of hotel. Yeah, but that's why the convention bureau is promoting this in a big way, because they want people to come in. Maybe while they're waiting for this event, they go to the, you know, they go to the zoo, they go, you know, wherever, you know, they, they're gonna be visiting other things, so. Think of frog follies multiplied by a bunch, big number, you know, that's, it's gonna be crowded for sure.
There's, there's a, a motion to table, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
I'm not parliamentarian. Does it require a second?
Yes, it does require a second unless you are rescinding your original motion, because you made the original motion, I believe.
The table?
I think you already rescind it, didn't you rescind your?
Oh, no, he, he.
I think the motion's still on the table.
Yeah.
Who made the original motion?
Bob and I seconded.
Could you pull your motion from the floor and then we could just make it again?
Okay, so you gotta rescind it, yeah.
Well, that's easier, he's just gonna rescind his motion.
Yes. No, let somebody else wants to make it.
I think we got plenty of time.
We've effectively tabled this till the next month. In the meantime, maybe we'll get some insider information from the EBSC. Um, or they'll do something, uh, and we can explore a few other options to see what's out there.
Is there any additional research you would specifically request from the committee?
Keep this up to date.
Yes.
You've heard of new information? I'm not, I'm not gonna ask you to go out and do specific new and additional research at this point in time, but if things come to light or we learn of things, I think it could be appropriate to add to the screen.
Certainly. April eighth.
April eighth.
Yes, yes, they will begin around twelve, I believe, either. Towards the end of eleven and then the to, it will be fully light again a little after three. So we're working at a several hour period, but the time of totality is about three minutes.
Okay. Am I getting, am I getting counseled over there?
Oh, he's, he's asked me a question.
Okay, so I was making sure. It would probably help if next month, when this is brought back, if we all get glasses, eclipse glasses instead of really cool glasses.
You'd have to wait like everyone?
Especially if you want the foundation branded one, because we don't have those, yeah.
And, and thank you, the other thing I would just add, because we did spend the time talking about this. And it was, you know, I assume the staff probably will hear about these conversations and some of the things. You know, if you happen to pick up, float the idea of trading a holiday for, you know, is there another, just to see how well that's received.
Certainly.
Yeah, thank you. All right, next item, the commodities transportation proposal.
And uh, with this from direct energy is Richard, I cannot pronounce your last name, Richard. And uh with this from Direct Energy is Richard, I cannot pronounce your last name, Richard.
Hey, it's Kenchlo.
That's why I couldn't pronounce.
I I would just add that um we've been working with Richard for a couple of months now and uh he came to us, which was great timing, because if you remember back in April, we discussed our very high um natural gas costs that we were experiencing and uh running low on budget for, so um this is a great opportunity.
Requested us to look into direct purchases of natural gas and he just happened to call almost immediately, so.
Timing's everything in this world, I guess. Uh again, my name is Richard Kinchlo, I'm with uh Direct Energy slash NRG Energy. Uh Direct Energy was acquired uh by NRG, we are officially transitioned our name as of Aug- August first in the state of Indiana, it's it's a state-by-state basis. But uh so from now on, we're we're going by NRG Energy, so, but we do have still Direct Energy tags in there. As Lori mentioned, I I reached out, introduced myself. I and we are a natural gas provider, we're an energy provider supplier. Uh we supply natural gas uh in Indiana as well as Kentucky. Uh Indiana is a regulated state on the power side, but not on the natural gas side. So I thought I'd reach out, introduce myself, I am the rep who covers this area and based out of uh my office is in Indianapolis, we have a direct office in Indianapolis. Um as well as uh I live in Louisville, Kentucky, so I'm over here a lot, I spent a lot of time in Evansville. So I thought I'd reach out and introduce myself and and see where we might be able to help uh the Evansville Vanderburg Public Library save money on their natural gas procurement. Um in Indiana, basically, the program is called transport. Um and what that means is you're able to provide, you're able to use a third party for your natural gas procurement. Um instead of going directly with the utility, you can use a third party. That means we can bring savings to you in that regard, we own gas on pipe, which means we can, and we have pool, a natural gas pool, which means we're able to bring savings to businesses, uh school districts, healthcare organizations in the area. So like I said, I reached out to Lori, introduced myself, um did the old cold call thing and and Lori actually called me back, which is more than welcome. But this kind of explains who we are in the state of Indiana, we've been in Indiana for almost uh over eleven years now. We we serve over two hundred and fifty businesses in the state of Indiana, we serve over six hundred and fifty locations. Um and we serve over uh fifty-two uh million decathermes a a year in natural gas to the state of Indiana. My my team up in Indianapolis, which is my gas scheduling team, so to speak, they have over sixty-plus years worth of experience in natural gas in Indiana. Um transport came about actually because Indiana's deregulated natural gas. We were actually pivotal in helping in convincing CenterPoint E- Energy to lower their gas transport threshold from five thousand decathermes annually to twenty-five hundred uh decathermes annually. Um so a lot more businesses and organizations were able to uh actually tap into that savings and were able to come to us and and or organizations to get third-party supply, which ultimately usually means a lot less gas uh cost as it relates to your natural gas. So basically, there's a couple of factors that make a difference to natural gas in this, I I'm not going to go too deep into this because you've probably got the presentation, it's it's boring, but it there are things that make a difference to the price of natural gas in this world, and that is uh the weather, as as we all know, it's traditionally natural gas when it was cold outside, your gas prices were higher. Well, as we're pulling coal offline, we have to inject a a substitute for that, well, that's now natural gas. So as we're pulling coal off to generate power generation, we're using uh natural gas for that purpose now. So that that means natural gas prices are, which were traditionally high in the winter, are now going to be probably a little bit more even throughout the year because of uh summer usage as well. So we're using power, natural gas to use power, government regulations, the government obviously steps in, outages, um inflation, uh sources of fuel, uh as I mentioned, uh crude oil and and coal. Coal is a four-letter word in this country right at the moment, uh whether it's not necessarily regionalized. It we we had, we are pulling more and shuttering more and more coal plants, so natural gas is filling that gap. And then geopolitical politics, obviously, the war in the Ukraine has a big impact on our natural gas. Um the United States is one of the largest exporters of liquid natural gas in the world. Um the more in, when the war in the Ukraine happened, um and European countries and allies started embargoing Russian natural gas, which was their, one of their largest providers of natural gas. We took up the 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 flag, picked up the flag and and promised them we would help them with their natural gas um imports, so to speak. So that makes a big difference in the geopolitical scene. Um also, we we are a large exporter, not only to Europe, but we're also a large exporter of natural gas to um Asia as well as Mexico. So um any questions so far? I know it's, like I said, it's not very exciting information, but it 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 helps explain what goes on. Natural gas is very, like I said, at in traditionally, natural gas is a very cyclical thing. Um that is starting to plane off a little bit more, as I alluded to with gas um being used more as a power burn source. Uh traditionally, the spring and the su- uh fall time was injection season, meaning during the winter, crews can't get out and extract natural gas out of the earth. So we have large storage around the country for natural gas, whether it's old natural gas wells we tapped, we now inject those back in, so those were the, what we called shoulder months, where we would actually start injecting into storage to brace ourselves for high winter months, so we had enough wh- wh- uh gas going into winter. Well, that's planned off a little bit more, and the more, as I said, we pull coal offline, the more even that gets and there's not as many shoulder months. Basically, it's it 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 really matters like when off-peak seasons are usually in the in the spring and the in the fall, whereas summer and uh winter are usually higher months in natural gas prices. So basically, the question comes back to who is Direct Energy NRG? We're a customer-first approach, um we we take a very holistic approach, looking at a variety of different things, whether depending on what state you're in, what regulations are in that state. So in some states like Illinois and Ohio, power is deregulated, natural gas is deregulated, and you can also look at renewables. Um so we we take a holistic approach in that, we're also very proactive. If we start noticing gas prices, depending on what kind of strategy that I've talked to Lori and Scott about, depending on what kind of natural gas strategy you want to look at, we we take a very proactive approach saying, hey, guess what happened today, and it happened this week, and Scott and I were just talking about it. Australia, eh there's a large exporting facility in Australia that decided, hey, we're gonna possibly go on strike. That is going to have major impacts on the rest of the world as it relates to natural gas. The US, as I alluded to, is a large exporter, well, Australia is a large exporter to Europe, which means now somebody has to take up the slack for Australia's uh strike, so most likely it's going to be us again. So probably more export, that means gas prices went up this week. Um also, heat made a big difference, but so we look at those kind of things and come to you in a more proactive way and say, hey, this is something to think about, depending on what kind of strategy you look at. So again, this is your team that would be working with you, I'm your point person. I have a whole team behind me, including my Indiana gas scheduling team, we can look at everything from sustainability to renewables. Um in some cases, depending on your usage, you also get a client services team that will help you, that's me in this case. Um uh it usually is dependent on the size of your gas load, but um we do have a whole team dedicated to your gas services. So what we did was, uh long story short, is basically I worked with Lori on getting your natural gas usage from CenterPoint. Um these are your nine locations and these are in decathermes. Um this is how much gas each location uses, uh I apologize, I didn't include the site locations, uh I can get that back in. Um I I might need to do some tweaking, but or from in Excel, but basically, these are your nine locations. You're averaging about thirty-eight hundred uh thirty-nine hundred decathermes per year of natural gas use. This is historic use taken from CenterPoint. I work with CenterPoint and I, we have to get CenterPoint's blessing for transport. So we work together in that regard, they know me, I know them, I work with them on a lot of businesses, but we have to get their buy-in to say, yes, transport is allowed, um you guys are part of the a government school pool for transport, so you can take advantage of that, basically, using, you're not one of my higher users, but you're also at the same time one, not one of my lower users in that regard. So and basically, your historic volumes look to be pretty normal for in the we- everything starts to ramp up in the winter and then you start to come down in the summer, it's basically a heat load, a traditional heat load. And I apologize for talking fast, but this, I'm trying to get through this as quickly as possible uh to explain what we're doing. Um basically, what we did was, we looked at twelve, twenty-four and thirty-six month gas prices. These prices are indicative and they can change and will change uh until contract is, uh until Lori says we want to do a fixed price, this is what we want to do for twenty-four months, send me the contract, signatures down, basically, these prices are indicative. Basically, what we did was, we did a hundred percent swing, which means you are covered if you go over your allotted amount, the thirty-eight sixty-six amount, or you go under your amount. I- if you are on a zero percent swing, that means if you went over one decatherm, you would pay, you'd basically go to a published uh GSA rate for that particular month or that particular year and you would pay whatever that is on the over side. Same thing with under, if you went under, we have to buy that gas back from you because we scheduled you in that certain amount. There's two different price schedules here, there's a full fixed price, which means you know every month, every decatherm of gas you're going to pay for the twelve-month schedule is for four dollars and sixty-eight cents. Um and it, there's also a basis price, which means if you want to play, so to speak, play the market and understand the market, you can do that, basically, you lock in the basis, which is the NYMEX plus, which would be ninety-nine or point nine nine five. You would lock that in and then you would go out and basically hedge the market and say, I want to lock in fifty percent of our usage for the winter months or how, seventy-five percent of your usage and play the market that way, and then we give you a locked-in price. Most of the time, the fixed price is pretty good indication of what you're going to get with with a basis price, if you went out a hundred percent. And I'm talking in very fast terms here and I've talked to Lori and Scott a lot about this, so let me know if you have any questions so far. So what we also did was, we did a side-by-side comparison, this is the pricing, indicative pricing for twelve, twenty-four and thirty-six months. What we also did was, this is the historic rate that you were, right now, you're with CenterPoint Energy. Um the the utility, basically, this shows you the historic rates that you've been paying per decatherm of gas from CenterPoint. So it kind of shows you, uh last year, we had a lot of volatility and there's s- slides that explain the volatility, last year's volatility. At one point, you were paying as high as twelve dollars a decatherm of gas, so four dollars and sixty-eight cents. Basically, and then it kind of shows you the savings, and I'll break, I'll show you the breakdown on the savings. So for twenty-four months, historical usage with your volume, last year, you paid basically for gas, you were paying about twenty-five thousand dollars for your natural gas. So you can see the historical rates, um the city gate tariff rates, that's what the CenterPoint gas rate is. And then basically historic, you averaged about six dollars and fifty-five cents on your decatherm of gas. If you went with our transport program, you would be paying it for the twelve-month period, four dollars and sixty-eight cents or sixty-eight cents. Um and total gas you, price would be eighteen thousand dollars. So that's a seven, that's a seven thousand dollar savings to the library for just the twelve-month period. And then did the same thing for the twenty-four month uh pricing, you can see the difference. Um and then uh I did the thirty-six month as well. And I apologize, that's a lot in a very short amount of time. If um but that kind of breaks it down, I also have historical information explaining everything that I explained as it relates to the uh storage ga- storage makes a big difference in natural gas prices, the the heat load, we a lot of, a lot of things that go on the southeast part of the country, in Texas in particular, makes a big difference to the, has a ripple effect for gas prices in the US. If Texas is hot, everybody is hot, to put it mildly, uh because Texas uses a lot of gas, natural gas for power burn, which means that has a lot of impact as it relates to what goes on for the rest of the country. Uh a couple of years ago, we had Winter Storm Yuri, it was cold, very, very cold, Texas wind farm, uh windmill farms froze. They had to go to something else, guess what they went to, natural gas, that spiked natural gas prices throughout the country. That had big impacts on everything, so again, it's a lot to cover and talk about, yes, ma'am.
I I think I figured this out, but in our packet, I think the uh current uh that fixed price maybe, have you adjusted maybe?
Yes, yeah, that that was last week's pricing, a lot has happened since then. He, that's why when I start out, it's it's indicative, meaning it will change tomorrow, it will, until everything's locked. Think prices will change, it.
I I made that assumption.
Yeah, and that's why, and and I probably, that's my apologies for not explaining indicative, it's basically, I mean, as the market moves, last year was so volatile, I'll give you an example, that I gave a customer a contract for, at nine AM uh for signage, he didn't sign until th- three o'clock, the price went up twenty cents in a day, that's how volatile last year was. We've we've kind of settled down, we had a very mild winter, which is good for everybody, we had a mild winter, we had a pretty mild summer overall, except Texas and the southeast has continued to buck that trend, but and mother nature doesn't want to do anything. So it it has helped bring gas prices back down. Um and so it kind of gives you an idea of the savings, you're in a pretty good position to save anywhere from about seven thousand to six five thousand dollars a year, depending on what kind of strategy you want to go with and kind of go from there.
Richard, did you take a look at, so we're using about uh thirty-nine hundred decatherm?
Yes.
The overall year-to-year variability of that? Because as if I'm understanding you right, if we don't get that number right, we pay market rate for the rest of.
If you go over your usage, it it depends, I mean, that that is.
We have to sell back, what I'm thinking about is McCullough, we're doing HVAC, I I would assume the system we're putting in is more efficient than the system that's coming out.
It's a bigger building now.
Building will be the same size.
Oh, oh.
I was gonna say. It's the same size, there will be some efficiencies with some of the newer HVAC, but most of HVAC is um remaining, uh we're getting some deducting and things like that, but the units themselves.
Not going to change that much.
Not gonna change that much.
And that that change is very, that that's.
Yeah.
It's gradual and it's great that you're all doing that, that's one thing I talked to Lauren Scott about. It's just like, we look at those things and year over year, we start to look at that, it's just like, if I start to notice drastic changes, like, hey, somebody left the AC, I had a customer one time leave the AC on for an entire year, and I was just like, what's going on here? You, it's just like, you're using a lot more energy than we anticipated.
Yeah, and and there will be some small gains, Rick, because we're doing things like a new roof, we'll get a better R-value with the roof, we're um doing some windows and doors and things like that, there'll be some stuff that will.
That will just kind of combine with these savings and not really affect them overall, okay.
I thought you explained too, maybe I misunderstood with this one hundred percent swing.
Yes.
We're actually protected.
You are protected, yes.
So if we do go over, if we opt to go with a one hundred percent swing, whatever that means, that if we do go over or go under, we assume no liability, we're still locked in, we don't.
Yeah, assume it like this, it it, let's say you're doing a hundred decatherm's a year, just flat out a hundred. If you go, it, there's there's cases where you can go zero percent swing, where it's just like, if you go over, you you will pay market price going in those months, either up or down, you, for a buyback or overage. There's ten percent swing, which means you are covered from one, one hundred to one ten. You, for a buyback or overage, there's ten percent swing, which means you are covered from one, one hundred to one-ten or ninety. Um, and then a hundred percent is basically you are covered in that regard, unless there's some crazy active, or some craziness that happens, act of God. We talked about that with Eclipse and everything, or things can happen. But it's very rare. And that, in most organizations, public organizations that are pretty steady with their volumes, like schools and, and general stuff like that, like a hundred percent swing, because they want to make sure they're covered. And, and it's just like, because a thermostat got missed, put on wrong or set wrong, that can affect things. So, yes. All right. Oh, go ahead.
I didn't understand, wait, you're going kind of fast.
I, and I apologize.
If you're on this zero thing and it goes one over, is the entire amount you use at the market rate or just a part you go over?
Just the part you go over.
Oh.
So it's one, if it's one.
How much our swing has been for the past three years or five years?
What's that?
How much other swing been? The high and low for the last five years?
Based on, let me go back to your. Well, I, I, I just got, I think we got twenty-four months.
Yeah.
Yeah, it did, it didn't look that, it's just like, I used basically last, I took from twenty-two to the current. Um, you can see twenty-two through twenty-three. It, I, I can go back and look at that. It didn't look like there, there's, there's that much variation. Now, I mean, you are a winter load, obviously, so, if it's a cold, cold winter, if we have a December, like the last two weeks of December, we had this year, that could impact things. Uh, as we didn't, a lot of people, we thought that, that winter, we had those two weeks in December, that was supposed to stretch out all throughout this winter. Well, Noah whiffed and Mother Nature played a good trick on us and that didn't happen, which is good. But if, if, if you, if there's more activity, more people in the building, you're heating it more and, and, and stuff, that could affect the price or, but with a hundred percent, that's where that coverage is, is taking place and holding.
It acts kind of like an insurance policy.
Yes, basically.
You're, you're assuring yourself against that year where.
Yeah, yes. Especially moderate loads, like you are, it's, it's, it's a good reassurance.
I got a question. Um, Richard, um, I, I learned about natural gas from T. Boone Pickens, you know, firsthand. So I understood a lot about what you were saying. Uh, let me ask you a question. Um, if, for example, they didn't go on the hundred percent swing and in the winter months, typically your natural gas prices go up because demand is higher. So if they needed, um, to sell back some, would they get a credit?
Yeah, basically that goes.
Price difference. So would the, would the, um, if they didn't have the hundred percent swing, you're paying extra to get that hundred percent swing.
Yeah, there, it, it, it's, the insurance analogy is a good analogy. It's, it's covering, it is covering you. And it's protecting you. Now, if you, if you went with a zero percent or a ten percent and you went over that or under that, it's like when you sell, you get a credit, but you're going at the credit of the market, the market.
Right, no, I understand that. So that, for, it's a month to month.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it very.
It varies.
When you fix your prices through the New York Mercantile Exchange, I understand. It's every month, you know? Um, so are you recommending the hundred percent swing or is there a twenty-five percent swing or?
I, 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 there's a, there, we usually do just zero, ten and a hundred percent. We can vary it. It's just like, it, I don't know if it's gonna make that big of a difference. As it relates to pricing, I can, I can ask if I can do that.
Yeah.
Uh, I'd have to go back to my team and ask them, but most of the people, like I said, in public settings or, known loads that are pretty consistent year over year, like the hundred percent, just in case. It's the insurance side of it.
So, so basically, that's like a collar then, when you're, uh, trading on the,
Yeah.
Uh, NYMEX.
Yeah.
You know, it just acts as a collar.
Yeah.
I got it. Okay, thanks.
And again, I apologize for talking really fast. I was told that ten minutes, so I was crying, trying to cram in as much as possible. So, but the, the good thing is, like I said, it, it is a savings to the library. It, it, it's, um, it's, it's a pretty good program. So, and it, and it, what it does is allows you to control the budget. Whereas when you're with CenterPoint, um, or with the utility, I should say, in, any utility, you're at the exposure of the market. So if we have a volatility year like last year, which is the reason I did this, that kind of shows you what happened. We were pretty steady and then all of a sudden, or last year, we had a very late winter, and then two weeks of spring, and then we had a very hot summer. Um, that coupled with, uh, very poor storage numbers going into our, midway through last year. We had the war in the Ukraine where we agreed to shoulder most of the natural gas, um, and kind of go from there. Somebody's excited about it. Um, it, it, it made a big difference and you can see the ramp up in prices. Um, the other thing to look at real quickly, and I know this kind of explains where we were, what happened last year and where we've come. This is the NYMEX strip.
No, the only comment I had is, I know Vannenberg County does this, uh, the, the, you know, uh, the Civic Center, all the public buildings are on this. I'm sure school corporations on it. Uh, I mean, it's a pretty safe way to, what it really does is it doesn't necessarily, guarantee you savings. It guarantees you, you know what your budget is. You know, because if the prices would drop off, say you had a mild winter and prices really dropped off, you might, you might end up paying a little bit more.
True, and, and there are people that, I mean, I'll be very transparent about this, that, last year, when gas prices were at twelve dollars, they bought at five dollars. Well, gas price, the NYMEX right now are the, the commodities market right now is trading at three something.
Yeah.
Or, so.
But it does, but it does guarantee you a fixed rate. So when we budget and we know we put in, you know, whatever that dollar amount is.
For something.
We're, we're pretty comfortable. It's not gonna go over that. We, we can feel comfortable. It's gonna hit the budget.
So. And thank you.
Thank you.
Any question, any other questions? It's.
I think generally it's a good, it's a good program. You know, otherwise I don't think all the other governing bodies would be doing it.
So what's the action that's required?
So we would have to sign a contract, which is one of the reasons why we wanted to do a presentation. Um, once we sign the contract, then, uh, CenterPoint switches out the meters. And it takes a little time to do that. So the information on the presentation today was based on October first start. Uh, the longer it takes us to get a contract signed and then we're looking at winter month, market numbers and what, so those numbers, that four point six eight, six percent would jump up higher. So,
Yeah, it's better to do that.
We're trying to, um,
August.
Get the best deal we can, uh, you know, wanted to make sure you had the, the time to, uh, review it. But if we wait till next month to, um, sign a contract, then we would have to start in, uh, November first.
And CenterPoint usually takes about thirty days to start getting meters. Um, I, we've, I, I have a, Lori and I both have an email into CenterPoint saying, hey, how long, when is the start date? When can we get the start date? Because there was originally thinking, it's just like, we had September possibly, but I don't think we're.
You could go ahead and fix the prices for January, February, March, you know, the cold months.
The, it, it's basically what we would do is the, the contract signed and basically you're the, most likely it is the October start, based on timeframes and where we are right now. Basically, it's just like that fixed price would lock. It, it's basically, I'd have to, yes, we want to do twenty-four months or thirty-six or twelve, what, twelve, twenty-four or thirty-six? It's locked at that four sixty-something and then it just goes from there, unless you want to play the market. And with the basis, kind of, that's what you're alluding to. You can do it that way. It's just on how comfortable, on a day-to-day or month-to-month basis.
Yeah, I guess what I was getting at is I thought you were saying you couldn't fix the prices until CenterPoint did their portion.
I, I have to have, if they come back and say, well, we can't get out there until October twenty-eighth, then I, or whatever, I have to go with a November first start.
Right.
So, yeah, so, no, no. Yeah, but I'm, I'm trying to get them, move them as quickly as possible to get that October start, so we're not going into winter months.
So, yes, well, so he was going from June to June, uh, and it was about twenty-five thousand. Um, we did increase next year's budget, uh, as we were working on it because we weren't sure what direction we were going. Uh, and we increased it by another five thousand dollars because we were, um, projecting out that we would be, um, over what we budgeted for twenty-twenty-three. Based on what we've been paying so far this year, because that cold snap in December around Christmas time actually was on our January bill. And so the beginning part of the year, our bills were much higher than normal.
So does, does the administration have a recommendation?
Uh, Scott and I talked about it with Richard and we're, we were looking at the hundred percent. Um, so we wouldn't have to worry about playing the market. And then the other option, uh, we can go one, one year, two year, or three years. Obviously, the higher the number of years, it's kind of the opposite of what you would think. You'd think the more years, the bigger the discount you get, but in this case, it's not because they're projecting out, not knowing what the market's gonna do with the weather and all those other.
Go back up twelve dollars.
The future markets are higher. We're what we call contango market, which means near prices are a lot lower than future prices. And there's a lot, there's a lot of factors going into, I bring up a lot of, I kind of tell the story of why gas prices are the way they are. Exporting is the biggest thing that's affecting future prices. We're expected, the US is expected to double its exporting in the next five years, which means, the reason I brought up Australia is that shows impact of what's gonna happen to our domestic pricing. We are now going to be affected by more international events because of what's going, uh, so that's gonna, because we're exporting a lot more. Well, Australia decides they don't want to do something. Well, guess who has to pick up the slack? Us, the Saudis, I hope Russia by then maybe, there's a lot of things that could impact that. Yes.
Richard, let me ask you, how, do you guys make your money by, your hedging and not actually fixing the price? You're giving us a fixed price, but you're not fixing it, hoping that you make a margin, on the market or are you going ahead and actually fixing it and then charging a fee, per decatherm on your, on your side? How do you make your money?
So the fix, in the case of the fixes, that is, that's the transparent, that is what you pay for decatherm of gas. There is, there is margin in that. And it's just like, now, if you went, it's just like, most companies, it's just like, they'll give you extremely low price and then it's just like, they make money in the backend with hedging. We tend, it's just like, depending with the fixed price, that's, that's the price you will pay for.
I understand. We pay, I wanted.
We make the money with, it's just like, with the margin on the fixed price, that's, there is margin.
So you actually back it up with an actual, uh, NYMEX, uh, trade?
Yeah. Okay, so everything, every, with the fixed price, everything's bundled in.
To make sure that you weren't doing that as a biz, what, how you were doing your business model, because, otherwise, if you went out of business, we could be stuck with, some big, bigger bills because you went out of business, but you're telling me you don't, you're not hedging. You're actually locking it in.
Yes, okay. Based on our pool, we have pools, as I alluded to, as the pools, I mean, we have pools, I mean, we have a, CenterPoint South Pool or North Pool. We have a CenterPoint South Pool, so, okay, so we have that way.
So there's a recommendation from the administration?
Yep, right now, what, what you're seeing here is we're saving approximately a little less than eight thousand a year if we go with a twelve-month fix. Um, if we could start it with October first with the current numbers here, if all that plays out, we're able to get meters installed and we need to keep the price that we're showing today. It's just shy of eight thousand dollars in savings and as Joe said, we know exactly what we're budgeting. And so it's very transparent in the budget. That's, you're saving money and you're not, um, susceptible to a market change should it happen. But also if natural gas prices drop significantly because of world changes, we're still paying that fixed price. So, but at least we budgeted for it.
Yeah, and if it drops that low, I'll say that we're in a recession, or some other catastrophe.
Yep.
We, we got lucky with a mild winter, um, because gas prices should be higher.
You're right. I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead with one year, one hundred percent, uh, commencing October one or assume thereafter as possible.
Second.
Motion is second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. And Lori and Scott, I will get with you. We'll talk tomorrow.
Uh, implement is, implementation step, master facilities plan.
You want me to take this, Eric, or do you want to take it as building and grounds chair?
I'll let you do it.
Okay.
So I can comment.
Okay, um, library administration, as always, have been meeting with the building and grounds committee to discuss our next steps. Um, as it relates to the master facilities plan at this time. Um, as you know, where we are now is McGol is breaking ground, um, basically into this month, first week of September. Um, and then we are selling our bond for the next three, um, projects within the facilities plan that the board's already approved, which will be Central North Park in Oakland, which leaves four of our current, our remaining facilities, which is East, West, Stringtown and Red Bank. Um, we have met with Baker and Tilly, our financial advisors, and Ice Miller, our bond attorneys, as well as Steve as our local counsel, and with the building and grounds committee. And what we're finding right now is the recommendation is to go for a bond series, which would allow us to say for, I guess, our current rate nineteen million, um, for those remaining four facilities, but we would bond them in a series, meaning we'd come back, we'd go to the city council once, for approval of up to nineteen million dollars in bond sales, but we would sell those bonds in a series. However, the library board wishes to do it, as a single, do east, do west, uh, do east and west together and do, do Red Bank and Stringtown separate, however, the library board chooses to sell those bonds and then we'd sell those bonds that way. But it would allow us to basically hedge the market on our having to go to the council more than once, and gives us flexibility in terms of being able to investigate land purchase, land acquisitions, whether it's a real property that would be remodeled for, um, a Red Bank or a Stringtown or vacant lot land, that we could purchase to do a new build. So it gives us the ability with you saying, these are the next four projects that we would like to do. Has nothing to do with bond sale this time. We would not sell bonds until sometime in fiscal year twenty-four, is when we start that process and we'd be well into fiscal year twenty-four before we would, um, sell those bonds. But it allows us to basically start looking for land for those four projects, um, to which obviously we just could start the design scheme if we wanted to do those first.
So talking about not taking the buildings we have now, actually doing them, but actually building new?
With, uh, for Stringtown and, um, Red Bank?
Whatever.
Um, right now, as it stands with the way the master facilities plan is laid out, there would be in addition put on to the East and West libraries for ADA access. Um, most optimum, optimally, um, that would allow us to add an elevator and additional square footage and rework those facilities. We do it in a historic manner. That's the way that has been planned out there. Red Bank, um, is undersized and a lot is undersized to build on unless we acquired adjacent land, um, which is a possibility potentially.
I thought we owned the adjacent land.
We own the adjacent land to the north, but there's the potential that more land may be coming available that is adjacent to us, possibly. Um, and Stringtown, we can't build bigger on that lot. There's just not enough square footage to build on that lot. Um, right now, the current Red Bank facility, we could not build up on it. It's not structurally built to put a second story or anything like that. Um, so it would, it would have to, um, be a total rework of that building and then to add the square footage you need. I don't, not sure we'd have ample enough parking, so that's what we're looking at there. And all of this just gives us the time to gather that information and bring back to the board to, to make decisions on whether it's a, a rebuild, a land acquisition, um, purchase of a property for renovation.
Questions, comments?
It's just informational, not action, right?
Yeah, right now, it's informational, just to let you know where the building and grounds committee landed on, you know, best steps to move forward, to give some guidance to the team as to where we might think we'll, we will head. Um, we've had several meetings, lots of conversation, discussions about what makes the most sense, both for the library and for the taxpayers and for, um, for everybody involved. We felt pretty strongly that that would be the ideal next step to get. For everybody involved, we felt pretty strongly that that would be the ideal next step to get. While, and, and Joe was very, very vocal on this as well during our committees, is that. We also don't want to, um, create a situation where we're not being transparent and not providing ample opportunity to our appointing authorities. To weigh in on these, but to get the ball started and in concert with what we've already proved is our master. Facilities plan, these were the things that we said we wanted to accomplish, um, and where we wanted to go, so. Really just to make sure everybody's aware of where we're, where we're at at this moment in time. And I, I would add that I think that we're gonna try to appear before the county council in some degree next week.
Next Wednesday, if, uh, yeah, we have it on our schedule, okay, they're at eight thirty.
They appoint you with that numbers.
Absolutely. And we will. They're, they're a little easier to get in front of.
And you also want to note that we did invite all elected officials to come and meet with us.
Yeah, with very short notice.
Agreed, but it was the very next day after we were asked by our committee to invite them.
Yeah, and that was a direction from the committee, at least provide the opportunity if somebody could make it and, and wanted to.
Yep.
Spend some additional time and dive into the information and. And, and do that and did it in a manner in which they could do it without violating forum issues or. Um, so, so we, we wanted to make sure that we had that opportunity and we recognize it was very short notice, but we at least wanted to give the opportunity. We had a few, take us up on it.
But I want to compliment the group, you know, the committee and administration, everybody's. Uh, really trying to work together and being accommodating and. And, um, you know, I think, I think we're approaching it in a way that is going to be. Uh, inclusive of the elected officials, which makes me happy, cause. You know, that gives, gives those boards a chance, I mean, ultimately this, you know, the city council is gonna have to hear it, so. There, it's good to kind of go through and. Educate the elected bodies on this, so I, you know, I think, I think you guys are doing a good job of. Taking your time, approaching it. The right way.
But I think to Bob's point, I just want to say, we ought to do the same thing for the county commission in short order. Um, get on their agenda, if they'll have us, at least offer the opportunity to, to appear before them. And I don't know if the EVSC's board would want to do the same thing.
I think one member of the EVSC board did show up, uh, was able to make the meetings. Uh, I gave an update to our board, so our other appointed, EVSC appointed folks. Uh, I gave a full report to our board, uh, and then just an open. If anyone had questions, they could approach me, I certainly updated Dr. Smith on what the, uh, facilities plan is and where the Buildings and Grounds Committee is. So in case he got, uh, questions from, uh. Uh, any of our board and no further questions have come, so I, I think it was a good meeting with Representative, uh, Duckworth or. Board member Duckworth, uh, and I had good feedback from that too, so.
Alright. Any other questions about that? Okay, staff spotlight.
Lisa, Lisa Holstein, our, um. Director of Collections is going to, um, at the request of the board. Wanted to learn how we select our library materials and she is nationally renowned for her book selection. And we're very sad because we are losing her August thirty first to retirement and she's moving. Back home and we're, she's been a tremendous, um, athlete to our organization, we are gonna miss her. But she is extremely good at what she does, um, selecting materials.
Thank you, Scott. I'm Lisa Holstein, the Director of Collections, as Scott said. Our department selects and works with books, CDs, DVDs, databases, digital products. Such as Libby and Overdrive, uh, which are eBooks and our e-audios. We use professional journals, webinars and professional blogs to make the recommendations as to the collection. The journals include things such as Library Journal, Booklist, Curcus and School Library Journal. How do we select materials? We use the library materials selection policy approved in two thousand and twenty two by this board. We take customer requests from people in the community. We buy books and materials using the New York Times Booklist, Bestsellers list to meet popular demand. And we pay attention to the critical reviews that I already mentioned. But I want to take a little bit different slant this time than the last time I addressed the board. Because I only talked about collections then. Today I'd like to focus on the four librarians who make those decisions. We all have master's degrees in library science. Two have additional master's degrees, one has a master's degree in education. One has a master's science in historic preservation. Now, I know many people think of librarians as sitting in our ivory tower, reading books. And I wish, um, all four of us have worked in public services. In the children's department. Reference department, various branches. We've all worked with the public, answering questions, fulfilling requests. And we do understand. What people are asking librarians to provide. We have worked an average of twenty six years in public libraries. In fact, we've lived and worked in Vanderburg County for an average of twenty four years. I've lived here the shortest amount of time and that's ten and a half. One of the team members said that she and her husband. Are the third generation and they're both their families to have graduated from Wright's High School. So these librarians are your neighbors. They went to local schools or their kids are going to local schools. They sit next to you at sporting events and programs. And they may play tennis with you or walk their dog in your neighborhoods. We bring our knowledge of the local community to selection for the library. We also bring our knowledge of materials and specialized areas to selection. One of our librarians was just a, a, appointed to a national committee. Two of our team members are currently in Cleveland at Overdrive's, uh, annual convention. Learning more about Libby and Overdrive. And I'm going to conclude by telling you what I've brought to my position. Before I moved to Evansville, I was, uh, the Public Services Librarian of the Year for the state of Arizona. When I came here, I had two job offers, the other one was for Director of Chapel Hill, North Carolina's Public Library. I chose to come to Evansville because of the staff at EVPM. So I brought my knowledge of collections, having taught classes in four states. I brought my specialized collect, knowledge of mysteries. During the time I've been here, I've been honored three times in the mystery field. I was re- reviewer of the year for Library Journal. And then I was honored by VoucherCon, which is the largest mystery convention in the world. By receiving their public services award. I also received the Raven Award for Mystery Writers of America. That has been given to people such as Alfred Hitchcock, Angela Lansbury. Uh, Franklin Delano Roosevelt and the Muppets. And I really just want to summarize by saying, the collection team is a group of Vanderburg County residents. Who bring our knowledge and our expertise and our interest in the community to our selections. So are there any questions?
I don't have any, but thank you very, very much, that was fascinating.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Any additional business to come before the board? Hearing none, I will call for adjournment.
We're adjourned. Thank you.